Hi.
Hi. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Cohasset School Committee. Today is Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025. We will do a roll call to start the meeting. Mr. Dial.
President.
Mr. Evans will be joining us shortly. Ms. Hannah is unable to join us today. Ms. McCallum.
President.
Ms. Luskey, President. Forum, and we will begin. Will all those who are able, please stand for the allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation
indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome back. Welcome back, teachers. Welcome back administrators. Welcome back staff. Welcome back students. Welcome back parents. This is a great start to the year. I feel like the weather has been absolutely perfect for it. I couldn't get more idyllic when you think of September and the start of a new school year with overfilled backpacks, signing of syllabuses, refilling and emptying lunchboxes. But we are excited for another great year in the Cohasset Public Schools. We will move on to public comment at this point. So if we do have any public comment, you may make that now. We do have a small audience of invited guests who are welcome to comment if they would like to. But otherwise, we will see if we hear from anyone online. If not, we'll continue on. I will note for the minutes that Mr. Evans joined us at 6:04. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Okay, so seeing no public comment, we will move on to our invited guest section of the meeting where we will, I am so excited to meet some of our new faculty.
So we're very excited to have some folks here with us tonight. Not everybody could join us, but maybe we'll start with Principal Godette, who can start by introducing our new Ausgood staff.
Sure. Should I say where I am or should I give my folks?
We actually have new, three new staff members. Two of them joined us last year mid-year, and we have one brand-new staff member. And so I will introduce to you Skylar Fedor. She is our new stars teacher. She took that position because we have a position that changed a little bit. We had a preschool position that is now half preschool and half kindergarten and special education. So Mrs. Ripley ended up taking that position, which is great because she's going back to her roots in preschool. And so that opened it up for us to snag up Skylar, who we're very excited about. And it's going to be a great year because she's still got Mrs. Ripley there, and she's got a caseload that is manageable. So it's a really good start for her to dig into special education. Yeah, it's good. We also have Ms. Kaitlin Downs. She joined us in the middle of last year. She is a halftime reading specialist. And she filled the position that opened up, I think, in like October or November. So she's been around for a hot minute. We wanted to make sure and introduce her. She's halftime and works closely with Liz Dineger as our reading specialist. We also have Megan Reese, who joined us as a long-term sub last year, also not too far from the beginning of the year. And she is point four music teacher. So she's only here on Thursdays and Fridays, and she's able to be with us when Ms. Lewis is at Deer Hill. So she's actually at school right now in Boston. So she was unable to join us. Those are our folks coming from, yeah, it's good.
Thank you all. Thank you very much for coming. And we have the opportunity to get to know the new teachers at the new teacher orientation. And so we're very excited that they're here with us.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So we have more teachers. However, they have other things that they needed to do. And John, did you want to talk to about the teacher we had?
Just to say a few words about.
Sure, I would love to have you. Because you have a lot of middle school staff.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Yeah, so we have several staff members. And I think what I'll do is I'll share with you something that we did for our first meeting at the middle school, which was to share a little bit about what teachers, the new staff, were like themselves when they were in the middle school. So it was a nice little way to get to know everybody. I'll start, first of all, to like to welcome and recognize Joe Bandera, who is a special education teacher in seventh grade. He actually gave us a visual for what he did. He actually shared, he still has his, his middle school ID from Hingham. We won't do him the trouble of actually trying to share that, but let's just say it is adorable. So, so that was great. We also have ESP Victoria Cataldo. As she described herself, you know, in middle school as someone who's a social butterfly, happy to be in school with friends and good. Next, we have John Farrell, who is our new band teacher. And he described himself as a quiet student in middle school and someone who's very into music and soccer. Our new chorus teacher is Amy Friday, and she describes herself as the epitome of the Hamilton-obsessed theater kid stereotype. And I could say, I was in her chorus room on the first day, and those kids were up standing and singing, and they dove right into it. And she's doing some really interesting things there. We'd also like to welcome Emily Graham, who is a long-term sub for sixth grade English. She describes herself as very creative when she was in middle school. I'd also like to recognize our school psychologist, Vanessa Leary. She described herself as quiet, friendly, responsible, and more of a homebody. Okay, there's three more to go, so we're almost there. Melissa Looney is our secondary team chair, so she shares her duties with us and with the high school. She described herself in middle school as friendly, cooperative, and optimistic. We also have Rachel Marinelli, who is the speech-language pathologist who works at the high school as well as the middle school. And she simply said that she wore too much blue eyeliner. And then last, but certainly not least, French teacher Jen Scott. We are very thrilled to have her at the middle school. She spent some time at the high school for a while. She said she was quiet, curious, and determined, but did not always have the confidence to recognize her potential. If there's a better way to describe what it's like to be in middle school, I don't know what it is. And so we are thrilled to welcome all of these people. And as the new guy, you know, I get to say I've been there for maybe three weeks longer than them, but it's been great to help them and support them. Really excited to have them with us.
Thank you.
Yeah, you won the prize. You're the best, yeah.
Absolutely.
Take care. Have a good night, y'all. Thank you.
And then we have a couple of elementary teachers from the Deer Hill. And so fortunately, Principal Solon couldn't be here, but I get to speak on behalf of Noah Edge. He's going to be teaching third grade, and he is, has so much energy and is so excited. He was in Hingham last year for a little bit. He graduated last year, and he is at baseball camp. So he has a game tonight, and so he does a lot of baseball. So that's why he's not here tonight. And then also, we have Abby Bizarro and She Bizarro, and she is grade four. And she spent her year last year in Plymouth as a first-grade teacher. And kind of a fun fact about her, she helps run the Marshfield Levitate Surf Camp. So we're really excited to have them. I had a wonderful, wonderful time with them. I could spend three days with them. And it's just, it's just such an exciting time. I know I had already talked about it, but just a great group of teachers. We're really lucky to have them, but they chose us to come here because it is competitive out there. So I think we're off to a really good start. These amazing teachers. It was a really nice, actually larger class than anticipated. Great.
Thank you so much. I will just say, I appreciate all of our principals and teachers who were able to make it coming tonight because the, the first couple of days of school are super intense. And to add another couple of hours onto your day to join us here is greatly appreciated and recognized. And also want to thank everyone who spends so much time hiring in our administration because it seems like we were able to get some really fantastic new faculty members. So appreciate that as well. Superintendent Rupert, please.
Great. So welcome back to the school year. It has been a fantastic start. We've had two days, and they've been really a great two days. So I thought I would start this evening by sharing some photos of what has been happening in the buildings. I will say they are probably a little elementary-heavy, just because they're adorable. Who doesn't like to see really cute kids on their way to school? So share first days of school. So actually, we're starting with the new teachers, so you get to see some of the faces that weren't able to be here. On the second day of new teacher orientation, we do a bus tour of Cohasset, so the staff can see where our kids live. Glenn Pratt actually does the tour and talks about the history in town. It's awesome. I, I was sick last year for his tour, and so I wasn't able to go, but I really wanted to go this year. So I parked on the bus, and I, having lived here for 25 years, still learned a lot. So that was great. And then we end the tour with ice cream at JJ's because how can you teach in Cohasset not have had ice cream at JJ's? So that was a great afternoon. And then we opened up the year with our new staff. They all came back last week. They came on Wednesday and Thursday, and our opening day was fantastic. We spent the whole morning together in the auditorium. I celebrated those teachers who reached their milestones, celebrated the folks who had new babies and marriages over the summer. And then we did a little bit of exploring about the new strategic plan, which I'll talk about a little bit later. And then actually, all of the teachers broke off into some community circles where they did some reflecting on the new strategic plan. And then they came back and they shared what they were excited about with regard to the strategic plan, what they needed to be able to help us achieve that strategic plan. And it was a really high-energy day. What I loved about it was that it was a day that wasn't a sit-and-get morning. The teachers had a lot of voice and opportunity to talk during that day as well. And actually, with the process that we used by the time we shared, every single staff member had an opportunity to have a voice in what we presented in the auditorium. And so that was a great way to start the year. And then our seniors, they kicked off the year with a photo in the parking lot on the very first day. And today, they went and did senior sunrise down at Sandy Beach. This is a group who are, you know, just a little bit extra special for me because I happen to have one in that crew. And so, you know, we're excited for them and for the year ahead. And then our middle schoolers getting into the middle school, seventh and eighth graders are always, you know, on their way to where they need to be, but some of our sixth graders need a little bit of extra help in figuring out where their classrooms are. But what I love about the middle school is we walked in, actually, before all the kids did, every single teacher was standing in the hallway, ready to go, ready to direct kids. It was awesome. And then we went to Deer Hill, where teachers were ready, kids were ready. Our SROs and friends were ready to greet our students. There was music. It was fun. It was exciting. And then we, and you'll see in a little bit, we actually, Ms. Owen and Dr. Skollens, and I rode the bus with our Ausgood kids from Deer Hill up to the Ausgood, which was great fun. They were like, who are these grownups that are getting on the bus with us? But Ausgood first and second grade came on that first day of school, super cute. Teachers were really excited to see the students and made it a really fun entrance. And then just staff in general, everybody was smiling. There were smiles everywhere. And then today was kindergarten. Cutest things ever are kindergartners. And there were a few tears, but they were all great once they got in because it's new, right? Like it's their first time really ever going to school. And so we were there to, to capture a few moments. And then I guess that's it. I guess you're not going to see the picture of us on the bus. It was there. I don't know what happened to it. You'll have to take our word for it that we rode the bus.
Yeah. And I think one of the things, we kept seeing doubles of children.
Yes.
Yeah. There are seven sets of twins. So we, because we kept seeing those. Is that right? Seven?
There's two.
And there's two right there. So it was really, really fun to watch.
Yeah.
So.
It's gone. All right. Well, they're more important. But it was a great day, and I was able to walk around the buildings today as well. And kids are where they needed to be. Kids are, you know, you go in and teachers are doing get-to-know-you activities. They're helping create routines and structures, and they're building relationships and doing all of the things that every great teacher does on the first couple of days of school. And so we're excited for the year ahead. Couple other things to note, though.
Superintendent, before we move on, the class of 26.
Yes.
Did they organize those things on their own? Or was it sort of more like a, was it parent-driven or was it student-driven?
It's student-driven. It's student council-driven. Both of those things are traditions.
Oh, they are.
They are. They're not new to this grade. It's something that everybody sort of.
I had never heard of that before.
Sort of does. Yeah. And so it's just a fun, fun way to kick off the, the new year. And then homecoming is coming up in a couple of weeks, and they'll do a senior spirit week as well. And so it'll be interesting to see if they come up with anything that's new for themselves as the class of 2026. But a lot of these things are things that others have done before.
Was there enrollment? Do you know what, how many there are? Is it 90s?
I think they might be 100.
There are 100? Well, I mean, it's always in someone's.
Yeah.
I just didn't know if you, I was curious to be new because it looked like a fairly small group.
It's, it's, they weren't big when they started. And then some people have moved and things over the years, but yeah.
It was nice to see. Thanks for that picture. I didn't know they did that, so that's cool.
They're a good group.
It's like the opposite of the walkout, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. In front of the school.
Definitely biased. Yes.
Walkout. No, like walkout.
So another thing I wanted to share with folks, and I'm going to share my screen again, is we often get requests throughout the year to share community information. We have a lot of community partnerships. We're very proud of the partnerships we have in town. And at the same time, we are working on being better communicators with the community in ways that are more effective. And part of that is making sure everybody knows where to go to get information about our community partners. And part of that is making sure our newsletters are streamlined so that people read them. And so this year, we've created a new part of our webpage. And so this is our website, the main site. If people scroll to the bottom, there's a community partnership events and registrations page that you can click right here, and it will take you to a new website where we have opportunities for groups in town who we partner with to share their news. So for instance, we partner a lot with the Historical Society. They help run field trips for us, and they're actually running a sea shanty shindig, I think is what it's called, on next Friday night. It might be this Friday night. It's up here, I think. And students who were docents all summer will be, will be presenting. But then they're also doing a house tour, which is not something that we'll be presenting in our newsletters, but something we want to promote because their efforts actually benefit our students. And so also, you know, when youth sports are looking to get their registrations, we'll put that information here. And that will keep our newsletters a little bit cleaner and more streamlined, but still provide the information that parents need and families need to get their kids where you need them to be. And our newsletters will have a little blurb that says, don't forget to check our community corner page. So I wanted to share that with folks, and we'll introduce that in the newsletters as they come out as well. And then the last thing I wanted to share as part of my report before I get to the next bullet is that, you know, with a new year, we have a new recognition. The Boston Magazine recently published their list of the top schools in Massachusetts, and the Cohasset Middle High School was number four in the whole state. And so that's something to be incredibly proud of. And I just want to congratulate all of the teachers, the administrators, the support staff, and our students who have helped us get to that recognition. So that's the report. Are there any questions before I jump into the strategic plan and goals?
Number one on the social.
Number one on the social, yes. Yes.
Number one in Cohasset, yeah.
Because the others above us were not on the socials.
One of the sub-communities is communications subcommittee?
Yes.
Can we get a meeting going for that group, too? Because I'd love to have us talk about, now that you're trying to streamline things, kind of what your vision is. And maybe we can also talk about, you know, other ways to make sure. I think a lot of information goes out. I think the amount that's digested is a small percentage of the information that goes out, especially talking to the parents. I think we've all heard the, I didn't know about that. Well, it's in the newsletter five times, right? So we want to try to solve that. We have a, you pointed out, I think we have a, an accessibility of information challenge as well. So I could put that on our schedule as well. That'd be great.
So it's actually one of the goals of the district for the year is communications. And so I think that having a subcommittee a part of the larger group is probably going to be the strategy I was going to use because I think we need more than just the subgroup or the subcommittee to be involved and hoping to get students involved, a couple of the parents, administrators, teachers, and do some real auditing of our communications, what we use, how well it's received, and even our systems. Because I'm not sure that there is effective and efficientness.
Love to be part of that conversation. Exactly. Because that's on my radar, too. And I think what you pointed out, it's more than just to the parents. It's also internally, it's also to the students. It's also to other, I mean, there's, you know, this is a multiple, you know, it's a very complicated web, so.
Yeah. So absolutely.
Great.
Yep. Great. All right. So last spring, summer, I think it was the last meeting in May, we presented to all of you the new strategic plan, and it was approved. And at that point, it went to the graphic designer. And so with the new year, we have a new version of the plan that I'm very excited to show to you this evening. I'm going to share my screen again. And this is on our website live as of today. So this is our new strategic plan. Again, content hasn't changed, just format has changed, and it functions like a little flipbook. And so people can scroll through and really see what the work is of the district for the next five years. Again, want to reiterate that this was a highly collaborative process. We had school committee, we had administrators, we had teachers, we had students, we had parents, all being a part of this planning group. And it was, our work was really based in data that we gathered from all of our different stakeholders and constituents. And so our graphic designer helped put this together for us to capture both the process and the work. And so our new mission, we place students first. Together, we inspire character, purposeful growth, and a commitment to authentic scholarship for the fulfillment of our collective potential, our vision, students improving communities, and our new set of core values. And then it goes on to talk about our theory of action. We're very happy that our vision of a graduate is now embedded in the strategic plan and very much aligned to our mission, vision, and core values, as well as our four priority areas, our four strategic objectives, or our compass points, as they're called in our plan, our teaching, learning, and leading, wellness, community engagement, and resources. And then each of those compass points is broken down into different initiatives along with what outcomes people should expect and who's responsible, along with the timeline. One of the things that I'll talk about next, when I talk, when I introduce you to our district improvement plan for the year, is that this is a five-year strategic plan. We want to really make sure people hear that because while there's urgency and excitement around all of these things, we cannot accomplish all of this in one year. It is going to take us five years. Some of these initiatives actually are three- to five-year initiatives. And so while in year one this year, we're introducing and laying a foundation, it will take us five years to really see as much progress as we're looking for. And so I would welcome people to really dig in and flip through this. It will be the, the highlight of the newsletter that comes out on Friday. And it really is going to be the guiding document for our work for the next five years. The strategic pla, a strategic plan, no matter where you are, is designed to guide progress and guide the future. It helps keep us on track. It helps us avoid some shiny objects that come down the pike because this is really grounded in the data of our district. And so we're very excited about it and hope that people will spend a little time looking at it. This summer, our district leadership team really took this plan, and we broke it down based on what can be accomplished reasonably in each of the five years. And when we did that, even in year one, there is work that rises to the level of needing to be in a district action plan. And then there's other work that, even though it's not in the district, that district action plan, is work that we are still going to take on and accomplish. And this district action plan is really what now will drive the school improvement plans that will be coming to you at the end of October and teacher goals. And we talked a lot about on those opening days that the work of the strategic plan, of the district action plan, of the school improvement plan, and the teacher goals, it's all of us together. One of the mon, well, the motto of our new strategic plan is learn, grow, inspire together. And so as adults, we are really taking that to heart, to how do we do those things? How do we learn together? Or how do we have mindsets of growth? Though all of us have been doing this a long time, there is still more to do and more to learn. How do we stay inspired? And that it's really going to take us as a community, not just our school community, our parent community, the larger community to come together to think about how do we support this work? And I think the teachers were excited about that and are excited to be a part of the work. And so I want to share with you tonight our district action plan so far. Again, just going to share my screen. And this plan also incorporates my goals because oftentimes, sometimes they're separate, and sometimes they're very much the same work as everybody else's. My professional practice goal is actually quite straightforward. It's to be a part of the new superintendent induction program. Their year two, I will continue to go to their programming once a month. My coach, who you've all met, Maureen LaCroy, will continue to come out and meet with me and support me. And I will continue to do all of the work that is expected as part of that program. The second goal is the student learning goal for the district. And this really is, you know, Dr. Solons and I were talking about the fact that MTSS has been a goal for several years. And we think this is really the, probably the last year that it will be an acceleration point and be a part of the district strategic plan because we are almost there. But we now need to spend some time calibrating tier-one instruction. We've spent a lot of time looking at what curriculum should be, aligning that curriculum, building benchmarks, implementing benchmarks. And now we need to make sure that the experience that our students have, though it will never be identical classroom to classroom. though it will never be identical classroom to classroom, is more um consistent and that teachers are applying what all of the work that has been done in the last few years with some integrity so that we can make sure that as students go from one grade level to the next, that there's um a consistent foundational experience that we can assume that they all have and that they have all learned this foundational material. And then it, this year will give us the opportunity to finalize what exists in our tier two and our tier three levels of MTSS. Our third goal is really to start moving deeper in project-based learning forward. Um, but what that does not look like is it does not mean that every child is going to be doing project-based learning by the end of the year. This is a huge undertaking. Um, this is a three to fa- five to seven-year goal even. Um, as somebody who spent many years working at PBL Works, working with districts who were trying to bring project-based learning to their district, um, it's a, it's a big undertaking. It's a mindset shift for both adults and students. It's even a shift for the families, um, because it's a different way of working. It's a different way of engaging students and thinking and learning. Um, and so we're actually going to start this year with a steering committee that looks at what are our current practices? Project-based learning exists in this district. Where does it exist? Why does it exist? What does really high-quality PBL look like? Project-based learning is one type of deeper learning. What else is happening in the district? Where else are we seeing other things that we want to capitalize on and expand upon? Um, and then how do we learn from what other schools are doing? And then how do we really define high-quality teaching and learning as a district? And how do we then build out a plan for the next two to five years that will allow us to provide the right professional development and help develop more curriculum that is excuse me, deeper and project-based in its nature? So that's um our third goal. Our fourth goal is tied to wellness. And that really looks like us starting to define what school, district, and student success looks like. Um, for the Cohasset District, um, in ways that support wellness, belonging, and academic growth. And what are some of the success indicators? Um, again, we'll have a committee that helps drive this work. You've seen evidence of, of it beginning, not the committee, but the work in the community read of Never Enough. And there's a lot to be done here because there's a hard, it's hard to balance high expectations and achievement levels and wellness. And we are seeking to actually find a way to balance those two things so that our students continue to strive to be the best that they can be. Our district continues to strive to be, I put out there on opening day, the best district in the state. Four is great, why not one? Um, but in striving for that, how do we also take care of our students to make sure that they're taking care of themselves as well? And how do we take care of our staff? Because we also don't want to burn them out, and they've been feeling overwhelmed the last few years, and we want to make sure that we're taking care of them too. So we're trying to figure out what that looks like. Um, and then for community engagement, this is where we're going to be developing a cohesive communication plan. Um, auditing our practices, looking at strengths, redundancies, and gaps, um, looking at our current communication tools, building a plan to address those shortfalls. One of the things in the strategic planning process that really, I guess it surprised me, was how much the students wanted to be communicated to about what's happening across the district. Um, I think sometimes we forget that they are actually really engaged and interested and in the, everything from the budget to the strategic plan. Um, and so those are, those are things we're going to look at. Um, and to develop a PR strategy, because another thing that came out of that process was that we're not telling our story well enough. Our families don't know what happens in our buildings on a day-to-day basis, and there are great things that happen in this, in these buildings. And so how do we get that out into the world? So we're going to be looking at all of that and then finalizing and publishing a plan. And then resources, our goal this year is really to develop a three-to-five-year-long financial forecast for the whole district. Um, we're going to be working with um Ms. Owen and some others, our, our budget subcommittee and the town to really um forecast out what the next few years will look like so that we can build a budget, both short-term, meaning for FY twenty-seven, and the longer term that actually will support the work that we're trying to do. Uh, we talked a lot about in the strategic planning process, in our goal setting, and then on opening day, that this is an amazing district. We do things really well and we can elevate within that excellence. And so how do we do that and how do we support that? Um, fiscally, policy-wise, in every way possible, because there is a lot of potential here that continues to exist, and I think we're very excited to see, you know, where that upper limit is. So this is the work that I would present to you as our work for this year. Again, it does not mean we're not doing other things. There are a lot of other things that we are doing, some big things, some small things, some technical shifts, some very, you know, adaptive shifts as well. Um, I think one of the pieces of feedback I heard as we, I talked with principals was, this is a lot. And it is, it, they're bold goals. Um, and you know, i- if we don't shoot big, we won't land there. Um, so you know, we may not get to that point where we have finished every single thing we have set out for the year, but we're, we're sure going to try. So I would welcome any questions, comments, if you have.
Should we go? Do you have any comments or questions for us?
You know, characteristically, I don't, um, I think this is a very, very good plan. You hit on a lot of the things that, that um you talked about at the committee level over the years. Uh, I'm eager to see where it goes. I guess one thing I would add on the communications that resonates with me, having been on the committee for a while and a part of the town, is I, I agree, we don't tell our story well. But one of the things that I'm floating for a while is um like a a brochure or pamphlet, or like an advertisement for our schools. And you'll see these things that like private schools have, like, you know, here's, here's why to come here, you know? And we don't, I guess, have to do that, but um I think that's the sort of thing, if we think about ourselves, is, you know, competing for students, competing for um for our, our, our kids. Um, that, that might help us kind of nail down and tell that story a little bit better, because I think we've got a, got a great story to tell. Um, one of my favorite things is coming up, I'm sure, is the, um, looking at the program studies.
Yeah.
I love looking at that. It's just like, this is amazing that we can offer all this here, so. Um, so I totally support all of this. It is, it's going to be big, but um I, I look forward to seeing how it, how it pans out.
Yeah, okay, it's interesting. I, there are a lot of districts who have a lot of different the bro- different things, the brochure, infographics, and so how do we, how do we use some of those things in ways that we have never used before? That's that's something I'm trying to figure out.
Mr. Evans.
Nothing specific this time, thank you.
It was Valen.
The PBL Steering Committee. Do you have an idea of uh like how that will be constituted, like who will, all that be comprised of, is it faculty, staff, family, students be involved in that? Uh, just, you might not know yet. I'm just curious.
Yeah, I think um mostly faculty and staff. Um, however, I anticipate that that group will reach out to those other stakeholders at various times. Um, that's what I'm thinking right now. But I haven't even put it, put it together for you.
Of course, certainly. And that's, that's why I was, you might not even know.
Yeah.
Um, and it, you know, that's something where it's so education-specific that it may make sense to have, to limit it to administrators and staff, but then branch out, like when they're, when they identify issues for input.
Yeah.
It may make sense, uh, but just keep us posted as you, as you figure that, as you sort of conceive that in your own mind. Um, the CPS Success Committee.
That will.
Do you, what's that?
That will include everybody.
Sure, um. I'm wondering, do you, and again, maybe early for you to, to be able to commit to um one perspective or another, or one position or another, but um, and it may be something for the committee to decide. I'm just curious, do you, you, you mentioned Never Enough. Are you, do you anticipate um, that one issue that committee may confront is the the grading scale here, the grading system as a whole, in, 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 in the high school, I'm sorry?
Yep, so actually grading is a a strategic initiative in compass point one or two.
Usually one.
Um, and so this year, um, that's part of the work at the elementary. You'll see, um, when they present their school improvement plans, that that's actually part of the work at Osgood and Deer Hill for year one, and it will be part of the school improvement plans at the secondary level in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Uh, because there was a lot of, we had a lot of conversation, and we really felt like we needed to have the conversations around defining success at the secondary level before we jumped into a conversation around grading homework, things like that.
I think it would be, I think it would be important to explore. I mean, Principal Scott has a lot of, as you know.
Yep.
And Dr. Stolins has like a lot of really interesting insight there.
Yep.
And I just think it really, I think the grading, and it's tough, because, you know, our, we want our students to succeed and be as competitive as possible when they're applying to um to undergraduate institutions. Um, but at the same time, I think the current scale, which forces people to strive for better than perfect, um, it adds to, I think, a little bit of a, of a, of a negative um environment in some ways. And we, we're, we're realizing a lot of success, so I'm not trying, I, I just, I, I don't know. It can be interesting to explore that, and it sounds like you are.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, and I, you know, we did, this was part of the conversation that the leadership team and um Mr. Scott Beletti was not on board yet. Um, but Principal Scott really felt like he needed to be able to have the conversations first and then be able to tackle that in year two. Um, and one of the things that, there were a lot of reasons we hired John Scott Beletti a lot, but one of the things that he does have in his bag of tricks is he actually has helped shift a grading process in a school that he's worked in. Um, and he spent a lot of time, hey, people tell you, he spent a lot of time actually talking to colleges and universities about it. Um, and so this, though we didn't plan it this way, this actually gives him a clear to be here for some time, to, you know, get to know the district and then help and really partner with Brian in thinking about what that could look like moving forward.
Create eternal resource.
Yes.
Just like you are for the PBL.
Yeah, he knows a lot.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I would just add that I am seeing a layered cake here, and I love it. Um, just the way in which the strategic plan and the district goals are so well-aligned and complement each other. And so the achievement of that um strategic plan is, is sort of spoken to through um the district goals. I know that that's very intentional. Um, but I just wanted to highlight that because I think it would be, you, there are so many things that you could be working on, as you said, that it would be easy to just sort of handpick a couple of goals and put them down, but the fact that this was done so strategically and intentionally, um, I would like to appreciate that. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, moving along to our teaching and learning session, uh, section with um Dr. Stolins.
So just a few things, because we obviously just got started. Um, but just um to remind families that we have Aspen Go, which is a different form of the platform. It's much more friendly to mobile devices, and most people do their work on phones, so uh, I think they'll find it a lot easier to navigate, um, but you can still access the original Aspen platform if you want to, anything besides your laptops and desktops, but I think people will find that much easier to navigate and find all the information they need. Just a heads up for our students at the high school that PSATs and SATs are coming up, and so October third, PSATs are happening, and then October eighth are SATs. So, um, kids, make sure you register and do everything you need to do. Um, and then teachers go through a lot of trainings, as you know, and so we do give them a lot of things to do before the year starts. And so there are some annual mandatory trainings they have to do. And so those include things like international law, Title IX, mandated reporting, um, also things around bullying prevention. Some of the laws that are out there, we can even do a homeless assistant act, IDA in section five oh fours. There's suicide awareness, all sorts of things. There's a lot from our nurses around universal precautions, so um, they have a lot that they need to make sure that they, is it, we also do a lot with cybersecurity and we partner with the town to do that, and they participate in that also, so it's much more extensive. Lots of towns don't do that with their staff. So, um, I just wanted to have kind of a quick overview of some of those things that they'll get trained on. And all staff have to do that, whether you're a coach, whether you're a teacher, whether you are an ESP, custodians, you name it, everybody has these trainings um, so that everybody's on board because we're all touching kids at some point, right? Of contact. Um, and then we were lucky enough this year to get some Title I and Title II aid funding, which we did not get last year, so um, I'll be working with staff administrators to figure out how we're going to spend a ton of money, but every little bit helps, so we're excited about that. That's my quick update.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Or the committee?
The committee.
Thank you, Dr. Stolins. Again, we just got very well-rounded presentation of all the things um you need to keep um track of during school. Um, we will move on to budget, resources, and governance.
So I just wanted to provide a, a quick update on our electric bus to diesel bus situation. Um, I was able to meet with um Michelle Leary, and we talked about what the process will be. Um, the electric bus is no longer viable for us. Um, she is in the process of still working with um, the NL and the folks to figure out what the bus is worth and then how we can purchase it and then sell it actually to another district that's looking for it. Um, we will be making sure tomorrow. Um, Kim, our new transportation supervisor, is going to make sure we are ninety-nine percent sure that it holds a charge. She's going to double-check tomorrow. And if that's the case, then it's going to be able to be sold. Um, and in the meantime, we got permission to move forward with getting a diesel bus. Um, Ms. Owen has taken care of that. They are working to get the cameras on the bus and do the lettering. At the same time, they're going to be dropping off the paperwork so Kim can go and get the registration and get that going, and, and then all it will need is an inspection, and then that bus will be good to, to be on, onsite and be used. Um, it is technically our spare bus during the day, but it will be used regularly for our athletics in the afternoons. Um, so we're very happy about that, and then at didn't write down the date, I want to say that maybe the September twenty-second select board meeting, they'll be voting to approve that shift from using those capital funds for the electric bus to the um diesel bus. And so we're just very appreciative of the partnership and the collaboration with the town to make that happen and make it happen quickly so that our students can benefit from that. And then I just wanted to say that our, our van had its initial inaugural trip yesterday. It took the golf team out. They went down to Carver, um, the eight who golfed, and they beat Carver for the first time in a very long time. So I don't know that that had anything to do with the van, but we're very happy that they were able to get to Carver um with school transportation. That's my update.
Thank you. Um, any questions, Mr. Evans?
I want to update on the facility side. Um, just, I mean, so it's public knowledge, but uh, we did get the, the official uh letter from FSDA regarding Osgood.
Yes.
Did that come across your desk?
Um, yes.
So, but that is going to come up, one But that is going to come up. One of the things with this, the accelerator pair, just so everyone knows. Schedule, we have ninety days for the town to vote to approve the funding for it. Special town meeting is set for November fifth, so we'll be having an article at special town meeting for that. It will require us to do some sort of, if we want to get the funding, it's going to be paid out of our school stabilization fund. It will not, the stabilization fund does not have enough cash in it for this thing. So there'll have to be a bonding part of that. It will not be an override. It will not require any sort of bond within that fund. But just so everyone knows, it's important that we communicate that we have a, a big ass coming to special time meeting and we need parents to show up. That way it is supported. Not that, not that I expect any controversy with this, but again, it's, this is part of the process and we need to, everyone to pay attention, every step. Wanted to mention that here as well.
Uh, yes, Superintendent Shannon, how is the newly executed plan going in terms of shuttling the bus drivers from the satellite location? Is that working as we had anticipated, or are there unanticipated problems?
So it's only been two days.
Yes.
So I don't believe we've had any issues with the shuttling. We are still working out some kinks with the parking lot out front here. But the shuttling has been fine. Managing student staff and bus parking is something that we're still working for. I anticipate by the time we meet next, it will all be fine. But we had to get everybody onsite in order to see how things worked. And I will say that Kim Principal Scott and these two cars have been working incredibly well together to problem solve. And so we've tried a few different things and I think that we'll, we'll get there in the next couple of days. But, you know, as Principal Scott said, even though they made an announcement about parking about twenty five times yesterday, some students still didn't hear the message. So we're getting there.
All right, well, just let us know if any, let us know if any sort of insurmountable challenges arise. I'm sure, yeah, some of them, you have to actually have the people in cars there to figure out. I mean, it's like the traffic cycle in the elementary campus, you know, the first couple of days. So I'm sure it'll get better, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the, the shuttling has been fine. We haven't heard anything.
That was my main concern.
It's just really sorting out, but that parking lot's a bit of a this might actually help because it forces people to do things a little differently.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Nice.
Mr. Guy.
Yes. Raise the stabilization fund. And I'll, I'll just ask either at a meeting or separately out line. Do we have a kind of a running balance report that shows in, in coming out and outlays on the stabilization fund? And does that make you share with me or the committee?
So I will tell you that we're working on that. I actually had a conversation with Katie Doobin the other day as well, and she's actually trying to sort that out as well. So it's not just us that the new town accountant started working on Tuesday. And so I anticipate that we'll be able to share that with folks, which she's sort of
I mean, but do we have, I mean, it doesn't need to be like account layers. I'm just like literally looking for incoming outlays.
We have that. Yeah, we can recycle.
Okay.
I just had that very excited about the, the sort of partnership that's going on, not only between many departments to get all of their vehicles parked safely here at the high school, but in the town. And for the select board and town support us and needing and understanding the timelines that we have to get this new bus online for our students, because it does actually ultimately save us money when we're not needing to rent buses or charter buses for athletics and or when buses are out of commission. So I think this is it shows a lot of foresight and requires a lot of coordination, cooperation. So from, from principals to students to the rest of us and all the town government. So I really appreciate everyone doing that. We'll move on to community relations and communications. So if there are any reports from us, school committees, subcommittees, or liaisons.
We were supposed to have a
I just jumped at the gun.
Yeah, I think we're supposed to have a finance subcommittee.
Oh, no, we're, we, yeah, we're going to.
Jennifer has reached out to both of you, I think, to schedule that.
Good.
Yes.
We're, we're hoping for the fifteenth or sixteenth.
In progress.
So.
Yeah, I'll have to be, I'll have to be remote.
Yeah, just check in with Jennifer. I think she sent you an email.
Awesome. And with the, talk about the revolving fund, one echo, which I just realized with the electric bus, part of the electric bus selling point was that the fuel was included. If we're, for now, replacing it with the diesel bus, we're going to have increased fuel costs. Another, we're working on the projections, but when we're working on the projections, we'll have to have that in there too. So I'm, I'm very concerned about that.
All right, that will close out that block. Onto school committee governance. We do have a second read of the service animal policy, which was distributed earlier today. So we can take any comments or further discussion on that topic, and then we do need to vote on that.
And just in case I, I'm hoping that you got some information. So we actually have this policy within another policy. So I was not aware because it was I found it. So we're just separating it out. So you actually have this policy and it's in animals in school. So we've separated it out. So it's separate from animals in school, and now this will be its own service animal policy. But you're actually, I didn't change any of the wording of it at all. It's just going to be separated.
Would you like us to approve?
Separating them out, so it's their two separate policies.
Separating the service animal policy from the animals in school policy.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't get that. There was a
it's here.
Yeah, okay, I see it.
But that background is helpful in terms of read, how the document.
Yeah.
Are there any comments or questions or discussion points to be brought forward on the animal service policy?
Thanks. So I think I was, I was here for the first read, so apologies if this is, um, it's been handled already. What's the, what's the source of this?
Is this like the, a mask standard model policy?
So this is actually cohesive policy too, and it is masked, but it's already, we already have it as our policy. But yes, and it is from asking, so it's we have our
So the one thing I would suggest, and we don't have to do it necessarily, but just add some rights policies. The second sentence of the second paragraph referencing regulations about miniature horses.
Yes.
Are, are we required to have that in a policy? It should be, because it doesn't actually adopt. This doesn't adopt anything. It's just a statement that regulations exist.
Yeah, and we have, you, you have to allow miniature.
I'm not saying we, we don't have to allow miniature horses. But this, this doesn't actually say that. This just says the regulations say that a public entity shall make. So we, we haven't actually adopted a policy that we will make. You know, I guess it, maybe it's just form of service. My, my suggestion would be that we delete that sentence and then the second paragraph, which is a descriptor of what service animals are, not, we, we define service animals in the first sentence of the second paragraph. So I'm not sure we need the second one as a matter of policy. I'm not going to stand on principle of that. If we're looking to approve this at this meeting, then it's probably not worth doing. But if we are not approving it at this meeting, I can suggest line arts.
So I think we do need to approve that this meeting. First of all, it's already policy. To be editing the policy, but I think we do want to approve, given the potential that we might need a service animal in the district in the coming days.
But we already have a policy, so it really doesn't, this is
Right, this is separate, yeah. We're just separating it out.
So we don't need, I mean, I ask if we already have a policy within our animals in school policy.
We're just recap it, we're just
We're just breaking this one policy into two. That's all we're asking you to vote on.
Why?
So that it's clearer. Because we went through, many, many schools have it as separate.
Yeah. Because it was, it was at the bottom of animals in school. But when we looked at mask and all the other school things divided.
Because the service animal is very different from a classroom teacher asking to have it pet in the classroom. And that's the purpose of the animals in schools policy versus the service animal, which is a very specific accommodation for medical needs for students.
Further comments or need for clarification? I would entertain a motion to separate the existing animals, animals in school policy from the service animal policy in our handles.
So.
Thank you. Second by Mr. Evans, motion made by Mr. Ellen. We'll do a vote on roll call, Mr. Dial.
Hi.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Leslie, I. So please include these policies, um, separated policies. Thank you. Um, we, I do not many topics not recently, reasonably anticipated, and we have no minutes. However, we will be moving into executive session to discuss an issue related to governance. So I do need a motion to move into executive session and not to return to the public session.
We have no minutes, correct?
Excuse me?
No minutes?
No minutes.
Okay.
I'll get to that. I, I, I hear that. Fine.
Secretary.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
We have to state the reason under section twenty one A.
Do you have the language? Do you want us to read the language for the
I don't have the language in front of me.
Okay.
We did, is it?
Like, is it, is it to discuss strategy related to, you know, with non-union personnel, with union personnel, with security personnel or strategies?
There's actually a couple of sentences we have to say.
You have to actually
We have to, we have to, what I'm most concerned with, we need to identify the reason. There's only, there's only nine enumerated reasons where, that, that we can move into executive session. That is the, that's what I'm most concerned with, is that we identified that on the right record.
My mistake, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Dial corrected me many, many times.
But I don't think
You're very good company.
You have to
And I wasn't correcting you.
You have to say section.
So there's not, no, no, but you, I've got the, the, a bunch.
You don't have to state the reason, for sure.
Correct.
So here they are. I think we're supposed to
Yeah, I think you could I think it may fall under personnel matters.
Yes.
Which number is that?
Two. Personnel, let's
That's strategy session and negotiation for non-union personnel. Security devices, criminal charges. Well, I don't know what it is.
You don't know what it is, so you're
How about four?
Probably only the superiors in January will be able to identify.
It's not union contracts, it's not two. Ten is trade secrets.
Oh, there is ten.
Oh, to comply with general law, seven. To move into executive session to comply with the provisions of general law.
Well, you have to notify the individual.
Correct. Yeah.
I think it might be seven.
Seven.
Yeah.
Chapter thirty, capital A, section twenty one, A, seven.
That's what you don't need to do.
If we're just saying seven, and
Say, we're doing to comply with the provisions of any general or special law.
Yeah.
We're just lawyering.
You should say the, number seven and say
Yes. All right, so we are moving, we would like to move. I, I think we should move into an executive session to discuss an item.
Just say under section seven.
Under section seven. And we will not return to Okay, and number seven is for the, to defy everyone, is to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. Thank you, Mr. Dial. All right, so Cohasset, thank you very much.
We have to do roll call.
Oh, we do have to do roll call, thank you. Mr. Dial.
Hi.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Mr. Ellen.
Hi.
Miss Leslie, I. So Cohasset, thank you very much for listening, for being a part, and we will see you soon.